Is that purposeful?
No, it's not purposeful.
We are now live.
Okay, okay. Welcome, everyone. This is the March 24th, 2021, meeting of the Village of Amerenic Planning Board. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to do something different tonight, and even the board members don't understand why this was on the agenda. We're going to indicate attendees because we found out that the person who's watching the video to do the minutes can't always tell who was at the meeting if they don't show up on the screen or don't speak during the meeting. So we're going to just basically tickle off who's here. So we have all five members of the planning board, myself, Cindy Goldstein, John Verney, Ellen Styler, and Richard Littman. We have our village planning consultant, Ashley Lay. We have our village planner, Amber Novak. We have our village consulting engineer, Esteban Garcia. And I believe we have our building inspector, Frank Tavolacci. I saw him in the waiting room earlier. I'm not sure we're going to, we want to elevate him up. And if there's anyone else who should be noted from the village as being in attendance. Hi, Frank.
Teresa.
We should probably, if they raise their hand, I don't know if anyone else is here from the building department.
You didn't mention Teresa.
Okay, a little bit of housekeeping. I also want to just note.
Kathy, you forgot me.
Oh, Susan Oakley. Yes, we have Susan Oakley, the planning board's landscape consultant. Thank you, Susan.
And Teresa Beckner.
The whole team is here. Great. Thank you, everybody.
You got, you forgot Teresa.
And, oh gee, I'm staring right at her name. And Teresa Beckner, who is the villages, the village planning board's attorney. I'm sorry, Teresa.
No worries.
This is new for me. I haven't done this before. I, and I should have written down the names so I would just, instead of looking at the screen. Okay, we good? Everybody? I got everybody? Okay. And I also just want to make a note that there were, there was some scrambling going into this planning board meeting over the last couple of days with documents being added to the website at the last minute, changes to the agenda at the last minute. I understand that for you planning board aficionados who may be following us, I apologize if this caused you any concern or discon- disconcernation because we just got some things later than normal. The planning board was also kind of scrambling. As soon as we got documents, we were posting them. And then we had a request to be on the agenda that came in, in time to go on this agenda, but it kind of fell through the cracks. So we added that at the very last minute this afternoon. And in order to prevent the applicant from losing their, their site plan approval. So I just want to make sure that people who are following us, and I know there are people who do that, don't think anything happened untoward, that it was just some glitches in getting things timely and whatnot. We did the best we could to make sure that we're accommodating planning board members, but most importantly, we're accommodating the applicants as best we can. Okay, so we're going to start the meeting with approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes before us for approval. The first one is minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, January 13th. I have a comment on the last page, but if anybody has any comments before then, please jump in. No? Okay, on the top of the last page, I don't know, Amber, if you're making note of this to tell Barbara. After the first bullet, I, I, I think I said something about what Ms. Oakley had questioned in, in a document she had sent to us. But then the next three bullets, I, the next two bullets, I believe, were the response from the applicant's consultant. And then the final bullet was the conclusion of the conversation. It looks like I said all four of those things. So I didn't say anything about trees being damaged in the storm, so that just has to be clarified. Okay, do I have a motion then to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Cindy, you're muted.
Somebody, somebody filled in.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I also approve. Okay, now we have minutes for our meeting of January 27th, 2021. Does anyone have any comments on these minutes? No? Do I have a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And finally, we have minutes from our February 10th, 2021 meeting. And this is where the Barbara, who does our minutes for us, had a question about whether she put down Frank Tavolacci and Ashley were present, but she was questioning to make sure that they actually were. And so we can tell her, I do believe that you were present. Other than that, I have no comments on these minutes. Anybody have any comments? No?
That was your fastest meeting, Kathy.
See?
That was your fastest meeting.
I know, like 10 minutes. Well, we had one item on the agenda. I'm going for the record, John. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 10th.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Okay, Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, people just moved around on my screen. It's very disconcerting. This brings us now to the first item on the agenda. This is an open application for 594 Alder Road for an in-ground swimming pool. We heard from the applicant at our last meeting on the end of February. So we need to promote the person who's going, or persons who are going to be speaking to this application. When we last saw you, we typed, we typed the action, and then there were some open questions with regards to the SWIP and the landscaping. So I see we have Michael Stein has joined us.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, do you want to bring us up to date? I know you and Esteban have been trading memos back and forth.
Yes, we've actually been working with, with Esteban quite closely on this as well as several other applications that will be on tonight. And it's my understanding we've addressed all Esteban's concerns.
Okay, well, I guess the latest memo that we received just came in late this afternoon from Esteban, basically informing us that all of his issues that he has raised with you have been addressed.
Yes.
Okay, Esteban, that's accurate?
Yes, that is correct. There were some documents that were missing from the pre-submission, so they sent it over. Quickly looked at it, satisfied all my previous comments about the SWIP and asked what was the plans as well. So as far as stormwater wise, I am comfortable with, with the plans and the SWIP as they are as of right now.
Okay. Now, your memo mentions that certain items have been added to the plans. Those, the new revised plans have not been shared with members of the planning board at this point in time. Amber, have they been received in the office?
The, the plans that were, the revised plans, we.
This, this would have happened today.
Right, we have, I cannot confirm as I was not in the office today.
So Esteban, you've seen the revised plans, but we haven't seen the revised plans.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But overall, the revisions that were done are not substantial where it substantially changed the application. It was basically addressing some technical issues.
I'm just trying to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Oh yeah, not, not a problem at all.
Before we move forward, right, okay.
Well, I also think there were, there were two items on the village consulting planners memo of February 23rd, talking about updating sheet C2, talking about the 40% coverage. Make, you know, to, to show the updated calculation and then also talking about a lighting plan. Or there, there is no lighting plan, I believe, but is that all noted somewhere? I'm not sure the plans.
There's no intent of providing any lighting, exterior lighting. There, there may be a couple internal, internal pool lights, but that's, that's more of a safety.
One was updated to add the 40% comment.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other open issue was when you presented the, and we had a discussion last, at the last meeting with regards to this project. The homeowner mentioned that he was going to do some planting, but we had no landscape plan.
Sorry, so I figured I'd just bring up the plan. So there were, we had, were, there was a concern raised about this one area that they would like to see some additional trees. We added four additional arborvitae, basically in the same context as the rest, all the rest of the vegetation around.
Right. Okay, and, and, and then there's a chain link fence that's on the applicant's property, correct?
Correct.
Goes around the entire, and that will be, that's the only fence then around the pool area. You know, that will be the big security fence for around the pool areas.
Correct.
Okay. And then I see there's also mention of a stockade fence, but that's on the property behind. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So these are the revised plans as of this morning. All right, so there really wasn't much of a landscape plan to be reviewed by our landscape architect. But Susan, if you have any comments that you'd like to make, please feel free to, to jump in.
I didn't see anything striking, so I didn't.
Right, okay. Four arborvitae in addition to the other arborvitae that are already there, so. Okay, and when we last met and spoke about this, there were some concerns from some of the neighbors. And I don't know if there's any one who would like to speak about this application before the planning board tonight. If there's anyone in the audience, if you raise your hand, Amber can elevate you or promote you, I think the word is.
We do have someone who wishes to speak. Sandra Schwartz.
Okay. Okay, Sandra, you're muted. Sandra, you're muted. You might want to unmute yourself.
Okay. I am Sandy Schwartz. We have the property in back, so I'm just, would like to double check about the arborvitae facing our property on the left-hand side. There are several trees there. They are in terrible condition. There's really not much left on them. They're pretty dead. Looks like the deer had gotten to them. So I just want to make sure that that area, which is quite bare right now, is going to be fully covered with screaming, with screening. It's, it's very bare.
It appears that's what the plan is, but is somebody from the applicant want to just reassure your, your neighbor behind?
I don't know if Ford's going to do it.
If, if there's additional trees that need to be added in, I'm sure the client will be happy to do that.
Okay, now also, arborvitae, if you, if you're already getting deer browse in your yard.
I'm sorry, the, the applicant is on the line, and so I'm just going to promote him to panelist so that he can speak.
But while, what I was saying was arborvitae are very tasty to deer. So if you're already getting deer browse in the yard, you're going to also have to do something to make sure that your, the arborvitae, the new and the old are sprayed or protected in another way than from the deer. Mr. Kligman, you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Just a note on the village website, it posted this meeting at eight o'clock. So just in the future, you may want to double check that because it came up as eight on, on the, on line. Yeah.
I, I, I noticed that on the Facebook page too. It was, it was mentioned at eight o'clock. Amber, I think that's a note for Robert in, in Genito. He seems to think we started a, yeah, okay.
Okay, so just to back to the back corner, I had Mike Hudson put it as four. I'm happy to put more back there. That's a tricky corner. Sandra, you'll find out it's, there's a Japanese maple that is in the corner of my property. I built the whole pool around that Japanese maple because it's such a beautiful tree. And I did not want to, under any circumstances, take that out. I basically tried to follow the, kind of the footprint of what I could figure of the previous pool based on pictures that my kids actually found online of the old house. But in that corner, because it's shady, it, it's, it's the deer, and it's shady, and I, I continually will replace, you know, what's in that corner. So I'm going to try and put the arborvitae's back. I'm going to have them sprayed with the deer repellent. I, I spoke to Mangones, and they have the stuff to spray it. And I give you my word that if it ends up where, you know, they continue to get brown and the deer are always in that corner, I even get the fawn, you know, laying down in there, I will replace those as necessary to give you the screening that you need.
I appreciate it, and I, I know I live in Shuri because the deer are a constant, our enemy. That seems to be an area where they love to browse.
For sure. And you asked me last time about that fire hydrant. I looked into that too. It, it's, it's just laying there. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's looks like it was a former. And at one time, they must have used it for something, but it's not connected to anything. It's just laying on the ground. And when they start the construction, I mean, I'm, I'm going to probably either just pitch it, or I'm going to have my son try and sell it on eBay.
Because I sell it on eBay. I'm sure some people want it. It used to be on the property. It was actually attached to that property at one time.
See, I didn't even know that. So, so I'm going to get it out. It's not connected. And like I said, you'll probably see it on eBay.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Of course. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, any, anyone else would like to address this? Does any member of the planning board have any question, comment, anything?
Well, I, I, first of all, I think it's Mr. Kligman, and in our paperwork, it's Mr. Klingman. So I, I think we should get the name right. If it is K.L.I.G.M.A.N., there's no N in the middle.
There's no N.
But normally, in a resolution like this, if, if there are new plantings, we put something in the conditional section talking about that they will be maintained. You know, not just planted and then, you know, not, not watered or, or taken care of. And I think it's usually for a year. I think we could maybe add something that says if they don't make it, you know, that a different planting material might need to be substituted if the deer continue to be a problem.
That, that is correct, and since, like I said, we were sort of on parallel tracks here, this is at the moment where the two parallel tracks converge. So we have a draft resolution, but we knew we probably would have to make some changes to it tonight. So we can add a condition under, under the resolves that any new plantings would be maintained. And you're required by code to maintain them anyway. Anyone with a pool is required by section 300 of village code to make sure that the, the pool is adequate screened from neighbors. And it's not just when you get the first, you know, when you first put the pool in, it's when you have a pool, period. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
It's Gary still. Am I still, am I still up?
Yes.
So as for watering for Sandra's peace of mind about, because I was struggling in that corner about maybe a year ago or just a little more, I drip lined that whole back area. So they added, aside from my sprinkler system, I had a drip line additionally installed back there to add more water. And that runs in, in, because I have the ratio, and it adjusts up and down throughout the season. It's a smart learning watering irrigation controller that runs up over, sometimes over two hours a day in this, in the hottest months. So I'm watering that area. I promise you, I will not, you know, cut back on that. And if they, if anything happens and they, the deer or whatever, I'll just keep replacing them.
I appreciate it. I do have a question. I, I need clarification. And Gary, maybe you know this, the stockade fence, is that on my property or yours?
So I thought, and Mike Stein could probably answer this. I had TC Maris out here for a survey. I thought it was on my property, but when they said on this call that it's on your property, I'm not sure. I mean, Mike would probably know.
It is literally right on the line.
And the chain link fence, fence is on the other side of the stockade?
The, the, the chain link fence is on the 594 side.
Okay.
But the stockade is, is, it shows a dead on, on the property line.
Okay, so if it has to be maintained, one of us will do it. Okay.
Okay.
Want to replace it?
Okay. Question then for the planning board. You, do you all want to proceed with the resolution, the draft resolution tonight? Or would you prefer to wait till the next meeting? We've pretty much finished the review of the application. We have a draft resolution in front of us. We have one amendment to that draft resolution with regards to a condition, the, the typical condition on plantings. Does anybody have any problem with continuing? Mr. Kligman, have you had an opportunity to look at the, the draft resolution?
Yes, I have. And I mean, if, I'm not trying to push anybody, but if it could get resolved today, you know, I've contracted, I have, I could put my, Brian, you might want to jump in on this because, Brian, why don't you kind of take this one? Because we're trying to move forward, you know, to try.
We understand that. I just wanted to know if you have any issues or questions about the resolution.
Oh, no, 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 not at all. Everything is fine. I'm, I'm very satisfied.
Right, we tried to move things along as best we can. We don't want to hang it around either.
I appreciate that.
We have a lot of new applications coming in with the spring. We're trying to get rid of the ones that are here.
Thank you so much. I misunderstood.
And we get rid of them. I mean, you know, resolve.
Kathy, Kathy, for the record, do you want me to go over the changes to the resolution that are in front of the board quickly?
Sure.
Okay, so we've corrected Mr. Kligman's name in the heading and the first paragraph. In the sixth whereas clause where it's highlighted in yellow, that would now read, "The applicant's engineer submitted a revised stormwater management plan dated March 24th, 2021. This letter and the enclosed plans addressed the remaining concerns expressed by Keller Sessions, and Keller Sessions provided a final memorandum dated 3/24/21 finding." And then it's, then it, it's the same.
Okay.
And then the other change is, under the last, be it further resolved, we've added a new item, and that item would read, "Applicants shall maintain the proposed new plantings of arborvitae shown in the plans."
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Teresa.
No problem.
Okay, if everyone's okay, I need a motion then to approve the resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck with your.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
I hope it goes well.
And, and thank you, personal thank you to Amber in the office. I was new to this, and she was fantastic with all the follow-up and helping me through the process.
Thank you for telling us this because Amber's relatively new also, so it's nice to know she, she's, she's graduated.
She was great.
Thanks. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is also a swimming pool application. Seems to be the pandemic, what's going on with the pandemic? And Mr. Stein will be happy to know that we've grouped all your applications together, so you don't have to stick around after you're done. Okay, so we also then have an application for a swimming pool.
I also just want to quickly note for the record that Dennis Drogen from the building department is on the call. He's, he's called in, the number 91433.
Oh, okay.
Not to read it for the record, but he's, he's on the call.
So for the minute.
Joined a little bit later than the, the attendance that was.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I was wondering who that was. Okay, so this too, we met you at the last meeting. At the, at that meeting, we discussed issues with regards to the stormwater management plan, some other issues with regards to the project. And so I understand there's been some discussion and some work on these issues. Mr. Stein, I believe you've joined the project, so do you want to bring us up to date?
Sure.
And now?
Basically, again, like all projects that we're, we're working on, our first step is to go out and do field testing. As anticipated, we had, we had ledge rock at a relatively solid depth in most of the areas. However, the, we did find one test hole actually right next to where the pool is going, where we did get down to a sufficient depth and without encountering ledge rock and had a fantastic percolation rate. So we basically went back and designed the whole stormwater management system. It involves both coltacs as well as some additional storage to, to provide into the coltacs. We've been working again very closely with Esteban, trying to address all his comments from the previous comments as well as other ones that were issued. And I'm, I'm hoping that he may have had a chance to, to review all the final revisions that we made, if not, whatever last revisions there were, or comments there were, were relatively minor. I know we also had submitted or developed a landscape plan based upon input from the owner. I don't recall if Susan Oakley had a chance to review that or not.
Okay, let's do one thing at a time. Okay, so we have this revised plan in front of us. And we also received a copy of this at the end of last week for our review. Does anybody have any questions? I think one of the open issues last time was the area of disturbance and the access to the construction area. And.
So the access to the rear yard will be off of the driveway right through here. So there'll be, for all the construction, they'll be coming through, accessing the drive, accessing, coming through the driveway, then into the backyard. The limits, the approximate limits of disturbance is 4,620 square feet.
And that's the area that's in between the dark line here in the back?
This dark dashed line.
Okay, okay. All right, so, so that got it, that, that question was addressed. And then I don't know if. I don't know if, uh, Esteban has any comments about that? Cause I know that was an issue that you raised. So Esteban, we have also have a memo of, uh, dated March twenty-second from you. Um, and I still, I, I think there's still some open issues. Um, so have they been addressed? Since this memo has been issued, we don't have anything updated from you or from Mr. Stein.
Uh, I haven't, um, part, uh, I haven't had a time to review the, the revised, uh, drawings, uh, partly they, they did come in, uh, a couple of hours prior to this meeting.
No, we were scrambling.
To, I haven't had a chance to, uh, you know, open, open it up, but it seems that some of the, just as I had a quick glance of this revised plan, it seems that some of the comments have been addressed. Um, I just need time over the next, uh, couple of days to look at it and, and, uh, provide my, uh, any further or any further comments or say if my comments have been addressed from the initial memo from the twenty-second.
Okay. Um, okay. So.
The comments that were contained in the, in the March twenty-second, um, review memo were relatively minor with respect to the overall scope. So I mean, if those can be made a condition of approval, that, that would be really appreciated. And we'll, of course, we'll work with Esteban to make sure anything, any concerns he's had are, are, are all addressed.
Okay. Um, all right. Do, how, how does the, uh, board feel about that? I mean, everyone got a copy of, of this, uh, on, let's see. On Monday, I guess, or yesterday, whenever we got these. Um, okay. So I'm just, uh, browsing through it. Uh, number eight on the, uh, on the memo is the first item that was not yet addressed. It says, if the plan notes a section of the proposed patio is to be within yard setbacks and shall consist of bluestone set on compacted stone dust without use of mortar joints. Uh, the details shall be coordinated with what's shown on the plan, the section. Oh, and then it looks like, oh, on, on the plan, it says something else. So this is just was a discrepancy between what was described and what was illustrated on the plans. Is, am I reading that correctly?
Uh, yes, but I think that memo related to, um, the pre- previous plans from the other engineer that had created plans from the last planning board meeting.
So that, that, that's been corrected?
Uh, yes, but I think there were some, still some, still back and forth in terms of what materials were going to be used for the, um, for the patio. Maybe the applicant can, can, can further share, um, uh, for that. So I didn't, since I didn't see like.
All, all new patio areas will be the, uh, bluestone set in stone dust. There'll be no new patio areas, uh, set in concrete.
Okay.
Okay. So that could be a condition to me, uh, on our resolution to make sure that's done. Uh, and are you fine with that, Esteban?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay. Um, item eleven, um, additional spot grades should be added to the pool patio to demonstrate how the new patio will be collected in the trench drain to the greatest extents practicable. I love reading engineering reports. So it just says this was not addressed. So somebody would want to explain this to us and to tell us what's going on.
The plans that were submitted, um, prior to my updated memo, um, didn't have, uh, additional spot grades. Um, so it was a little bit unclear how, um, the water would get there, but it seemed, uh, would get into the trench drain. But it seems, uh, from this revised plan that Michael Stein has, um, provided to us, it seems that some of the spot grades have been, uh, uh, um, added plan, uh, illustrating, uh, the pitch, uh, along the, the patio and showing how water would get into the trench.
And we also have a, a, we have a mini channel drain which goes along all the downhill side of the patio. So the pool elevation set at twenty-five, w- we have, it's all set to be pitched, um, away. And this is the uphill side. So we're not going to have any drainage coming this way. So it, but again, I mean, that, we can definitely add some additional spot grades a- as maybe necessary.
Okay. Anybody uncomfortable with proceeding the way we're proceeding now? Anyone on the planning board uncomfortable with this? No, yes. No, speak now. Teresa, are you, uh, able to, somebody's got some background noise that's. So if you're not speaking, if you can mute yourself, that'd be great. Um, okay. Kids and dogs.
Kids and dogs. Yes. Those are my kids and dogs. So I.
Sorry.
I apologize.
I, I close myself in the only room I can with the, with the door. So the dogs, we don't hear my dogs or we'd be right there with you. Okay.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We have one person who has their hand raised. Oh, I'm sorry. That's just you, Michael. Um, no, we do not have anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay. We'll, we'll get to, we'll get to the landscaping in a minute. Let's just continue on this. Okay. Um, item fourteen, it appears the retaining wall along the western property line of the parcel will require a footing drain from any potential groundwater flow from the proposed infiltration system. The plan shall include size, slope and materials.
Part of, of what we've done with the infiltration system is we put a, a barrier around it to make sure that anything is being percolated. As compared to horizontally, um, in part because that, that's what is allowing us to, to be closer to the foundation than typically we w- we would, we would allow. Um, and, and we can look at the same barrier along that side, which it, but one way or another, I mean, it's a relatively low wall. Uh, I don't think we're really, we're, we're about a foot high. And which would be that foot where our filtration system is, we'd be below where the ground elevation is basically. So we really wouldn't be contributing any water to behind the wall.
So is, is that shown on these updated plans?
Yes, we, the invert of the system is, uh, of the coltech system is, where are we? Uh, is elevation twenty point five. So the top of the unit is around twenty-two, twenty-three, and our ground elevation here is twenty-three.
And so where's the wall that we were, you were talking about?
Right along the western side here.
That's only about a foot high.
It's, it's about a foot high here. Um, it gets to about just over two feet high back in this corner. Two and a half feet. And over here is about two, two feet.
That's shorter than it was previously proposed, correct?
I don't know what the other.
No, no, that's, um, it's, um, it's variable. We haven't changed the top of wall elevation. So there might be just a few places where it's a little bit more than that, but it's, it's very variable, uh, given, you know, uh, the existing conditions.
So the top of our stormwater system here is elevation twenty-three, whereas the ground elevation over on this spot is twenty-three point eight. Um, so we're, we're pretty far away from there to be able to have, to have an impact to any, any footing drains for this wall. We were actually based upon the height of the wall. I don't even see really a need to have any footing drains behind it.
Okay.
Yeah, I could, I can conclude with that, uh, um, with that assumption. I think as long as they can provide a, I don't know if, if, uh, I, I didn't see a, from the previous, uh, engineer, it looks like he submitted a, a retaining wall detail. Um, I didn't see one on this one. Um, so I don't know if that one could be provided just to kind of show.
That's no problem at all.
Yeah. So as long as it shows the depth of, uh, how far the footing, uh, the, the, uh, retaining wall is going deep into the ground and, you know, showing that, um, relative, I guess, to the proposed infiltration systems, then, uh, I can, that would adjust that comment and a footing drain wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't be needed in this case.
And I'm just scrolling down. So just to, I'm pretty sure there we are.
Okay.
So the, the retaining wall details, we're not showing any footing drains on them. Oh. Uh, sorry.
It's better enlarged. We can see it better.
So that's just the detail with the wall, with the fence in the wall. And this is just, is the detail itself for the wall.
Okay. Okay. We good on this one? That brings us to, um, item sixteen on the memo. The plan illustrates the proposed pop-up emitter connected to the proposed trench drain. The plan shall illustrate the pop-up emitter connect, connect, connect directly into proposed infiltration system to provide emergency overflow for larger storms. So.
Larger storms, basically the water just isn't accepted into the system. It'll, it'll flow, uh, basically as, uh, it, the trench drain is, is level going across it. So it'll just basically continue right across it and then, and no more additional flows will enter into it. There's nothing that it could back in that could potentially, uh, damage the house or into roof leader drains or things along that lines. So it's, it's, it's usually, and it's just puts it almost as a level spreader where again, it's a, it's a uniform line going across that it's not just one point that dumps right out.
Okay. So I, I guess, Esteban, I'm not sure what your comment, when you say not addressed for number sixteen. So.
From the previous plan to this plan, um, the, the previous plan showed a pop-up emitter, um, connected right to the trench drain. When I saw the latest set of plans, um, it didn't include a, it didn't include a detail for, um, or an overflow. Um, so that's why I said the, the comment wasn't addressed because I didn't see that, uh, from one, from, from the last plan to this plan. So I don't know if Mike, if he, uh, haven't not, haven't not seen the set of drawings just yet, uh, given the time of when it was submitted. Has a pop, has overflow been added to the plans?
No. And if, i- if we were to, I would probably take an overflow and put it down to the, to front of the property. Just so that way we're not, it wouldn't go on, if it overflowed, it wouldn't go onto the neighbor's property, which, uh, we can do that. It's, it's not a really big deal.
Okay.
And I can connect right into the side of the catch basin. So when I come down here, it would overflow out down here.
That is fine.
Sounds like we have resolution there. And then the final, uh, issue, um, again, uh, number nineteen, the plan shall i- illustrate the connection between the pool equipment and drawdown mitigation practice.
And that's connect full discharge piping for six inch drawdown to propose coltech recharger. That's, that's the note we have in right here.
Oh, yeah. I can see that. Satisfied.
Okay. So that's on the plans. Okay. Okay. That was everything on the engineering. Um, let's go back to the other open issue. And, uh, that was, uh, the raising of the grade in order to, um, be able to accomplish this in the back corner there to accomplish the pool and the impact it would ha- possibly have on the neighbors. Trees that are right on the other side of the property line. Um, when we last discussed this, uh, the neighbor, uh, uh, asked for time to, um, look into this issue. I don't know if someone, uh, someone from the neighbor is here, but why don't you explain? I think, uh, you're proposing to replace.
Yeah. Um, I could take this. This is by Gary homeowner. Uh, so I, I coordinated with my neighbor. Uh, one of the trees, uh, the spruce was leaving to the side and, and, you know, it was a little dangerous, whatever. So we took that down. Uh, so the tree that needs to be removed on her property that, you know, that's the closest to the wall has been removed. Stump is ground out and we're going to replace that tree. The larger thirty-six inch, uh, mulberry, uh, is going to remain. And we'll do the root protection as per the, uh, information given us by Tarabella.
Okay.
And that, and that's it.
Okay. Um, but I think there was a note that, uh, if the, if the larger mulberry tree, uh, is damaged, it will be replaced. Is that correct?
N- no, we're, we are just going to cut the roots back to the property line, you know, carefully with the, you know, per the memo that Tarabella provided.
Okay. So, so one tree has been, uh, removed. Because it was, uh, damaged and the other tree, uh, you, uh, you, you're going to, uh, protect it by cutting back the roots.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Um, okay. Uh, is there, uh, so the, uh, is your neighbor here to comment on this or I? If so, raise your hand. So Amber can, uh, promote you. And Susan, I don't know if you have any other, if you have any comments also on this.
Now, anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay.
I, I'll just say like, uh, I have a letter I could always provide if you guys want. She, she, uh, she gave me a letter. Uh, we all signed it with our tree removal company.
Okay.
Which tree is coming down and, uh, and then we did the work.
Okay. Okay. Um, Susan, do you have any, anything to add? Are you comfortable with this?
Um, there, I'm comfortable with the treatment of the thirty-six inch mulberry tree as, um, if the applicant follows the directions for proper tree pruning, um, which they mentioned on the landscape plan. Perhaps we should pull that up while we're talking about it. Um, they mentioned in the notes to, about the mulberry tree that, um, the root pruning is included on the plan, but it is not. So that needs, how that is going to be treated should be mentioned in the notes.
Yeah. What, what we said was, um, it, it was a, a plotting error. I think we fixed it. Uh, it was included when, it's just a layer issue because we've scanned the, uh, memo in and, uh.
Okay.
Okay. There were a few other, um, issues. Um, quite often during construction, a demolition plan is the only thing given to contractors. So I like to emphasize that the trees that are to remain and the tree protection notes should be included on the existing.
They are, they're there and there's no further trees coming down.
No, I understand that, but, uh, they weren't on the plan I received, the demo, the existing, um, conditions and demolition plan that I received, as you can see there. So what often happens is somebody comes in and they don't realize that the trees need to be protected and they, the root system gets damaged with trouble.
We can add the, the tree protection on this plan as well. That I, 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 that could have helped clarify.
Mike, you, it's on the other sheet.
And the existing trees.
No, no, I, I, I realize it's just right here on, um, uh, this one.
It's on the landscape plan, but it should be.
Landscape plan, but I, 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 we can add this on to either seven erosion control plan or just to make sure it's covered, uh, in multiple places.
Yes. I'm not sure why you didn't receive, Michael, the March thirteenth, March eighteenth memo that I sent, but it's all detailed in that memo.
Okay. I, I'm not sure. I'll, I'll have to check.
Okay.
It's not a problem. We, we, we can easily take care of that.
Um, the applicant clarified the mulberry tree situation. Uh, it probably makes sense since you're changing the landscaping to remove the tree that's been the, um.
This one right here.
Yeah, the spruce that's been removed. Just take that out of there. So it's not an issue. Um, another concern I had was on the, I'm not sure the direction, the lower west side of the area of disturb, lower left side of the area of disturbance. Those, um, I believe there's seven of those north, uh, Arbor Vitae's. Oh, no, English laurels that are to be planted right on top of the attenuation gallery.
We moved the gallery, the gallery's to the right now.
Yeah, the gallery's here.
Oh, perfect. Good. That didn't make sense that that would be there. Okay. And, um, that alleviates that issue of, in case anyone's wondering, the shrubs were planted right above that piping system and it.
Okay.
Been too shallow for trees. And now they've moved it underneath the, um, permeable paddy, bluestone patio. Um, and one more item was that the retaining walls and the fencing were detailed drawings were in the original package, but I could not find them in the set of plans that I received. And I think the plans should contain the retaining wall drawing. Oh, I, I see that you pulled it up before and the fencing. The fencing is, uh, I didn't see that either.
It's on there now. It, we have the fence all called out and, uh, I think it was on the set that. It's on there now. It, we have the fence all called out and, uh, I think it was on the set that we submitted ahead of the BAR meeting.
The detailed drawing?
Uh, oh, you know what? I'm sorry. We submitted this set, then we updated, uh, the BR later. Okay.
Yeah, that, those are the, the fence wall, uh, the fence.
Okay, great.
Um, just questions for Michael Stein.
Yes.
What, what is the date on the drawings that are on the screen right now? Because are, I think these are updated from the ones that we, that we reviewed over the, uh, we have, uh, the ones I have are dated the fifteenth of March. Is it today's date? Okay, so, so, um, a reference to these drawings in our, uh, resolution has to be the updated date. That's, that's why some of it's different from what we're looking at. Like, wait, I don't have that on my screen here. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so, uh, I'm glad we were able to get this done. Okay, I think that was all the open issues, but please, anyone else, um, on the planning board, um, if you have any, uh, uh, anything else in your notes or any other questions that have arisen because of, uh, the discussion here tonight, please feel free to jump in and, and, uh.
So, so let me just confirm, Susan, with you that, I mean, there were a lot of items in your memo of March eighteenth. Has everything now been addressed to your satisfaction based on what you, what you looked at?
Well, I have not, uh, had the chance to review. This is the only chance I've had to review some of the changes that have been made in response to my March eighteenth memo. Um, but just to, uh, go over them, it was that the trees and tree protection, existing trees and tree protection should be added to the existing conditions and demo plan, the sediment and erosion control plan and the stormwater management plan, so that everyone across the board, um, whatever eyes see those plans, understand that those areas are to be protected with the tree protection detail. Uh, the other item was regarding the mulberry tree and the spruce tree. There's a, was a discrepancy in the notes for the mulberry tree that said it was going to be removed, but it also mentioned that there would be root pruning.
Yeah.
Um, I think the homeowner has, um, clarified that.
Yeah.
Um, but you should change those notes because it says it's supposed to be removed.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I completely concur.
Okay, um, so that has been clarified and the spruce has been removed, so that should be removed from the plan. In addition to, um, the row of laurel trees with inside, inside the retaining wall, inside the area of disturbance between the patio and the retaining wall, they were originally planted on top of the drainage attenuation gallery. And now they are, uh, showing us this evening that the plans have been revised today to show that that is not going to be an issue moving forward since they moved it. And, um, the other thing was the, was the missing detailed drawings for the retaining walls and the fencing, which they showed us are on, again, on these plans up, uh, uh, updated today. So I don't know if, you know, we need to see another set of plans or what, but.
I, I, I will mention to, to my fellow planning board members, while many of these items in and of themselves are not really material or we can see that there is an update, an updated set of plans with some of these things. Uh, I think as much as I would like to be moving this along tonight, I just would really feel more comfortable if, uh, Mr. Garcia and, and Ms. Oakley, um, took, took another look, um, and maybe we could see it too of everything being done in one place. If it was one of these items, I, I don't think I'd have a problem, but it is so many things. I don't even know how we would write a resolution to include all of these elements of both the engineering and also of, of the landscape situation. Um, but I'm open to discussion with, with other planning board members. I, I, there's a, there's a, a lot of items that need to be addressed, updated on the plans.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I agree. I, I, my question was going to be, if we approve this tonight, what control do we have over making sure all the different pieces are actually put into the, the final plans? I'm a little uncomfortable about that.
But we would be, these would all be, you're both, um, uh, Susan Oakley's letter and, or the comments contained Susan Oakley's letter as well as Esteban's letter would all be conditions of approval that we'd have to meet. We'd still have to some, resubmit plans that addressed all those comments and the same, the same two people would be confirming that, yes, we did in fact address everything. So, uh, we wouldn't be, be able to get a sign off from them to get a building permit until we did that.
So, so this gets into that fuzzy line of, you know, why, why are we here? You know, if we just always relied on, on our experts, which we do greatly, then you don't need a planning board to, to look at things. Uh, not that I want to check, uh, you know, check every, that every T is crossed and every I is dotted, but I, I just, I think to do it on the fly with so many individual things sets a bad precedent for the planning board. And while it's a pool, it's not a five-story apartment building. Um, I, I, I just, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with it, but as I said.
This also gets into the significance of what the remaining comments are and I, and I, I will definitely, um, defer to Susan and Esteban. If, if these are, it really comes down to, uh, it is substantial in, in wh- what the comments are compared to w- the plans we've already submitted. There are relatively minor changes that we have to make, which are, are easy enough to make.
I, I understand that. It's more the totality. There are a lot of them. Um, it's not one or two, a- and I think a few of them. I, I would think Mr. Garcia would just need to look at them more carefully and maybe he'll have another question. And then if we approve this tonight, i- it's out of our control and I don't know how much leverage he has over. I, I, I know you would do whatever needs to be done, but I think this is a bad precedent for us to, you know, release it all. We're very close, um.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, can we, uh, Michael, maybe you can stop sharing your screen so we can.
Sorry.
We can see.
Sorry about that.
Um, we can see other members of the planning board. Um, okay, so two members of the planning board have expressed some concern about doing this. I think if we, we, if the plans that Michael had on the screen that are dated today were something that we had in hand, I feel a little bit more comfortable about this. We're sort of doing things, uh, you know, on the fly here. We're trying to accommodate, uh, the applicant, uh, because, you know, uh, time is, time is moving forward and we don't have our next meeting until three weeks from today because we have an extra Wednesday in, in, in the month of March. Um, so, you know, I, I think we're giving it our best shot, but I, I, I also share your concerns. I just don't, I, I just don't think, I think there's just so many things and we don't have dates on final plans um, to even put in the resolution at this point in time. So I think I'm gonna, um, e- end the discussion here and just hold it over to the next, uh, meeting just for the resolution. Uh, by then, uh, if you submit the, uh, the new plans, that'll give our, our consultants ample time to give us the final sen- sign-off memos. It'll give the planning board ample time to review everything and make sure everything is exactly, um, you know, as, as we had hoped it would be. Um, and I don't think, it still just brings you into the, the beginning of April and gives you time to get the pool installed before the season starts. So I think that's where we'll leave it tonight and, uh, Amber then just carry, if you can carry it over then to the next, uh, to the next, uh, meeting. We have to, we have move on. We have other agenda items to, to take care of tonight. But, uh, thank you everyone for scrambling to get us to the point we are now. I know, um, our consultants and, uh, Mr. Gary and your, uh, your staff and your, uh, you brought Michael on to the project. He got a lot done in the short time that he was working with you. And I think we're, we're right there. We just have to tie up everything in, in, so it's clear. Um, and we, we know exactly what we're approving. Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, this brings us to the third, uh, pool of the evening.
No. I, I just want to say that, you know, we, we, we got the comments, you know, some of the comments came yesterday, so, you know.
I know, we got them too. I understand.
You got them, you got them yesterday? The village got the comments yesterday?
You got them yesterday also.
No, but the village got them yesterday?
Uh, we got the, we got the memos from Mr. Garcia. Yes, so, you know, we tried our best. We, we managed to.
You got it. Did you, the village got the memo yesterday?
Yes.
From Esteban?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, so we're all, we're all under the same time crunch.
And Amber, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
You got them the same time we did. So we're, we, you know, we're all trying to do the best we can. So, okay, all right, um, let's, we need.
Amber, if you could forward that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay. Um, let's switch over then to the next item on the agenda, which is ten sixty-nine Bayhead, uh, another application for an indoor swimming pool. This is a new application. Um, well, if you could present the, um, present the application and then one thing that we have to accomplish tonight is we have to classify, uh, the action under the SECRE law. So, um, I guess Michael Stein, you're up again?
Hello, again?
Again, I don't know, you're the go-to guy for pools.
We're doing a lot of them at this point.
Uh, it sounds like it. It seems to be, uh, y- you know, a sign of the pandemic times.
Uh, let's see.
Oh, yeah, this is the one where the plans are all sideways. It's hard for me to see them, right? Okay. Why don't you, um, give us an overview of the project? Again, this is the first time we're seeing this. Um, so there are a lot of open issues, uh, so let's, uh, let's start.
So, yes, good evening. Uh, we're looking at a pool at ten sixty-nine, uh, Bayhead Drive. Let's see, uh, again, first thing we're doing for stormwater design is we're doing, uh, field testing to make sure we have adequate, uh, percolation and default separation to groundwater ledge rock. Uh, in this case, everything worked very well. We had very good results. And so we're fully infiltrating all the runoff coming from the new impervious surfaces coming in. Um, we have our construction entrance leading into the site to get back around the house, uh, concrete washout area. There's some minor regrading in the backyard. However, for the most part, it's, it's pretty level already. We're just shifting one contour out to here that originally came through. Relatively, relatively minor regrading in, in order to put this in. Um, uh, we're putting in an isolation row to treat water quality and that's, that's basically it. Um, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, uh, so, so we have, um, um, just a, really an introductory memo, uh, from Esteban, basically, um, laying out some of the issues, you know, these general comments, which, um, again, uh, we received in, in advance of this meeting. Um, but, uh, obviously you haven't had time to review it and to comment on it. So that spells out the issues. We also have, uh, a, uh, landscape review report from our landscape architect, Susan Oakley, uh, which also then, uh, identify some issues with regards to, uh, let me see, I don't think that, uh, yes, as far as, um, things needing to be, uh, indicated on the plans and, uh, you know, just open issues. Again, this is just the opening, the opening of the application. So we're at the very beginning of the application, um, process at this point in time.
That's understood. And we've also been working and can, uh, communication with Esteban, um, as to make sure wh- whatever comments he had, and I think we pretty much have gone through addressing them. Um, so that, I mean, at the next meeting, uh, we should, that, everything from as far as he's concerned should be equally addressed.
Yeah, that would, that would be a good goal. Anybody on the planning board, uh, as you review this?
Um, my name is Cheryl Russ. I'm the applicant for ten sixty-nine, so I just wanted to kind of drop in, please. Um, so I've actually made the changes, um, as per the, um, for the landscape plan, the revisions to that. And I also, you know, as, uh, Mike mentioned, do know that they did address almost all of the items on Mr. Garcia's memorandum that we received yesterday.
Okay, okay, um, then in advance of the next meeting, uh, Amber, you can tell them when the deadline is to get, uh, the material in for the next meeting. You have an extra week this, uh, this time because of the extra week in March. Um, all the changes that you made, just submit them. We'll review everything and, uh, discuss this in, at more, uh, length in the next meeting.
So at the next meeting, if all of these items are addressed, is that, as long as there's no other kind of pressing items, does it usually get, um, approved at a follow-up meeting?
It's very possible, just like we did with Alda tonight.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, um, present at the.
Yeah, yeah, it's very possible. If this is straightforward and there are no issues that come up and everything gets addressed that's been raised as an issue, um, we could draft a resolution and we can do it that night. Uh, if there's issues that, uh, are, uh, still open, then we'll have to carry it over, uh, until they're addressed.
Okay.
But before we move on, uh, are there any other issues or anything that was, anybody from the planning board? Ashley, our planning consultant?
Uh, just one minor comment on sheet C dash two. It needs to include in the lot coverage calculations, a calculation of the coverage just within the rear yard, which has a maximum of forty percent.
Okay.
So since you're doing lots of pools, Mike, that's, that's going to be a comment for all of them.
Not a problem.
Okay, okay. Uh, does anybody have any issues? We do have to type this, uh, as a type-two action for SECRE, um, before we leave this item. Um, does anybody else have anything else they want to raise with regards to this particular?
Hi, hi, this is, this is Nick Barnes here. I, I'm the, the homeowner, um, so, and it's our first time going through this process in the village, um, you know, uh, of any kind. So I, I just, uh, I'm just curious, what, 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 what's the, what's the, this point you're just mentioning, classifying as a, as a type-two act? But what does that, what does that mean?
Um, Ashley, would you like to?
I could do that.
Secret act?
Sure, so, um, anytime a, a land use board in the state of New York makes a decision on an application, they have to consider the potential environmental impacts of the project. And there's three different kinds of action. There's a, there's a type-two action, which means that the, the project is on a list of actions that has no potential for significant adverse impact. And that's typically things like a single-family home or in addition to a single-family home, there, there's a whole list of items. There's a type-one action, which that does have the potential for significant um, clearing of more than twenty-five acres, something that's next to a historic resource. It just is, again, it's a list and then there's something in between called unlisted. This particular project, uh, is being classified as a type-two, which means that that would close the SECRE review and you, the board would be able to act.
Uh, thank you. And, and my other question is just, uh, just as a matter of process. Uh, again, it's our first time coming through anything here. So our, our understanding was that our, our, uh, our, our, our team here, Cheryl and, and Michael, uh, went through the process of, of, uh, of addressing everything came up, um, in, in the memos, um, here in advance of the meeting. Um, so I, 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 I just, I, I noted that, that the prior applicant, there was sort of a, a, a walkthrough of those, uh, and some discussion of potentially approving it conditionally. And, uh, it looks like we're, we're not doing that for our, um, application, even though, uh, i- i- it seemed that we had shorter lists and our, and our, uh, our, our, our team has addressed them.
This is your first time here before the planning board? Uh, the applicant prior to you, this was his second time. So we had already had the presentation of the project and our consultants had already sent us information with regards to their review of the project. Um, other than the landscape, um, architects reviewing the project, our engineer just basically sent us a, a memo, uh, that's boilerplate with, with, uh, without any, uh, real, uh, review. that's boilerplate with, without any real review and comment on it. So your engineer, Michael Stein, we'll work with him over the next short period of time and hopefully get everything addressed and we'll get a final report from Esteban hopefully that will say everything that he listed here, he's either not applicable or has been addressed. And the same thing with the landscape and we would possibly most likely, but it all depends on what happens, so probably right the next meeting. It's not it's, it's, it's very unusual to come to a land use board once. Because, I mean, quite frankly, we fast-track our applications. Normally, we wouldn't even charge our consultants with doing any work on the application until you come before us and we open the application, and then we ask them to look at it. We managed to get this done a little bit faster, so that we can do it in as few meetings as possible by starting before the meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, just, just so you understand the process, I know it's confusing if you've not done this before. But we, you know, we, we are here to help help the applicants, but we're also here to protect the interests of the Village of Manhattan as well. Okay, anybody on the planning board have any questions before we make a motion to classify this as a type-two action? No? Okay, I need a motion then to type this as type-two under SECRE?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We'll see you in a couple of weeks and hopefully everything will be all tidy. And we'll be able to, to move along with the resolution and pass the project.
Thank you very much, have a great evening, everyone.
Okay. That brings us now to the next new application, which is 124 Palmer Avenue, the old New York Sports Club, which is proposed to be converted to office space. And let's bring up the okay. Okay. We have Mr. Spats here.
Good evening, Chair, members of the.
Long time no see.
Um, long time no see, I've got, if I could, Amber, we have Eric Londa, Nick Girardi, Miguel Palma, Brian Dempsey and Scott Greenberg, if we could elevate or promote them, that would be wonderful. I kind of feel left out, I don't have a pool to offer, I mean, maybe we'll throw up at the building, I don't know. I, I.
I know, I know, pools are, pools are like.
Odd individual out, but, okay, that's all right, won't be the first. See everyone coming up here, okay, so we see Scott, who's actually the proprietor, the owner of the business. Brian, okay, Dempsey's there, Miguel. And let's see, Eric or Nick, you guys on board?
Yep, I'm here, Scott's here.
Right, Scott, I know you're there, I'm, I'm just want to make sure, Eric, okay, got it, all right, wonderful.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Good, 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 I see everyone. Uh, Chair, members of the planning board, it's been a while, let me introduce myself, Andrew Spats for the record. 650 Ballston Avenue, Suite 105, Mamaroneck, New York, on behalf of the applicant. 124 Palmer, I'm sorry, LRE Ferris LLC and Star Stock. First and foremost, I'm going to bring you back to your childhood, in about five minutes, you're going to understand why. It's legit, this application blew my mind when it first came through my door. You know, it brought me back to, you know, baseball cards and the chewing gum, or from, from years ago, so. Nevertheless, we are talking about 124 Palmer Avenue, which was, as pointed out by our Chair, the former home of New York Sports Club. And we're seeking to modify the existing building from what was an exercise club to an office assembly, as provided for in our section of the code, Village Code 34231A1E, that's a mouthful. Again, 34231A1E of the Village Code. Um, Star Stock provides a marketplace for sports fans and card hobbyists to buy, sell and invest in their favorite athletes and sports teams. By way of background, this is the sports card business is actually a five to ten billion, that's with a B, billion-dollar industry a year. And the proprietors who are on board this evening, that's Scott Greenberg, who actually still lives in Oriental. He was raised here in the village, attended school in the village, and he actually went to school with some of the members of our board and, and family members, so it's actually kind of like being back at home with everyone, so Scott Greenberg, who's, who's on our phone on the Zoom call, is joined by his co-founder Nigel Echols, who actually is not on the Zoom call tonight, but he also lives in the village since 2015. Um, they can talk more about the actual platform which they provide, but it's a means where football, baseball, basketball and soccer cards are actually sent and processed to 124 Palmer Avenue. At this location, they're processed, they're certified, they're graded and they're archived. And once this is done, they're then are actually shipped to a different location, a secure location, and they are vaulted for safekeeping. All the transactions that are involved with this business are actually on the property, but virtually. On over a hundred thousand cards are processed weekly. Four thousand to ten thousand sales can occur on any given day at the property. Twenty thousand virtual visits are done a day. Um, operation-wise, they will be employing approximately twenty-five individuals at the space. Five people are in the marketing, business development, and twenty people are working in operations with the card sorting and assembly. Parking does not appear to be an issue, as reflected in the update provided by Brian Dempsey of Providence Design Engineering, that should, and I'm hoping that members of the planning board receive that update. I am, interesting to note, twenty-two people of the twenty-five will be using public transportation, specifically Metro North, and only three people will be commuting by car. For all intents and purposes, there appears to be very little build-out. They plan on using the original flooring to accommodate the needs of the tenant, the locker rooms from New York Sports Club and some of the cardio and weight equipment that was present is also being maintained at the premises, so they're not changing a lot of the infrastructure internally, staying the same. The proposed floor reflects, you know, hoping you saw that as well, reflects the assembly area, the office space, employee lounge and ancillary storage. Which again, that storage is only for temporary purposes, because then everything's shipped to a secure vault. This, needless to say, I think was a very fortuitous encounter by the landlord, the owner of the property. They were very surprised, unfortunately, as I think the entire globe, when the pandemic struck so hard and knocked out a very longstanding and good tenant of theirs. And obviously finding commercial tenants right now is not exactly an easy task, but they were able to come across these two young men who again are born, raised here in our village. And there's this amazing potential that's emerged with an extremely unique and tech-savvy-based company. Scott, and it's very interesting, and I'll, I'll pass the baton off to my, to the applicant. I asked them, I said, why Mamaroneck? This is such a unique idea, why do you want to be, be here? You could be in Brooklyn, you could be anywhere else, why, why Mamaroneck, why this space, it's a big space, why do you, and they said, A, this is home to us. They offer during the summer internships to young individuals from the schools to help out with this, the baseball card and it's very sports cards, sorting and, and it, it's something that they can get back to the community and, and it's a very, very intriguing and, and it's something that, as someone who's approaching fifty, I forgot about baseball cards, my kids collect Pokemon cards, I didn't even know what a Pokemon is. I know it's not a sports team, I know they don't play football, but, so it's something that's exciting and, and I'm hoping that we all can agree that this this would be an ideal and different use for our C2 zone. So without further ado, we do have the, the property owners who are on board this evening. Eric and Nick, Scott Greenberg, who's present, who, he is the owner or co-owner of Sport. And, I'm sorry, Star Stock, and we also have the traffic engineer and the architect, Miguel, who's present, so we welcome all and encourage all questions, thank you.
Can someone let Nick Girardi in?
Oh, Nick isn't on, I'm sorry.
No.
Sorry, what is his name on the, on Zoom? I have Nicole Simon.
Could be Marie Girardi?
Marie, Marie.
Sorry, Amber, I, I had got that people have different names, as long as it's not one of those talking cats that we saw on the internet.
I see his name, I just.
All right, thank you Andrew for taking us back to your childhood.
Our childhood, Chair.
I'm a lot older than you, I, I put baseball cards on, well, I didn't have a bicycle.
I know you're about to say. I know, I know, Mr. Verney did that, and there's no doubt that he, he had baseball cards in his.
I was a big collector of the New York Yankee cards.
There you go, hey.
Talking about the nineteen fifty's here, I had a Mickey Mantle card, it probably wasn't worth it.
You might want to go find those.
Everyone's going to be doing that tonight.
We have a lot, we have a lot still to get to tonight, so we're going to go through this, this is the first time you're here.
Yes, yes, Chair.
So, you know, if somebody wants to, you know, we, we saw the plans, we do have a, a memo from Providence Design Engineering dated February twenty-third, we do not have anything updated, so if there was something after that, we didn't get it yet. We do have to type this for SECRE tonight and Ashley and/or Amber, if you could please clarify, when we spoke last week, we said this didn't have to go to HGZM, but now our coverage sheet says it does have to go to HGZM.
Right, so I, I dug into this a little bit more, and actually there's another change that will need to happen to the summary sheet based on, I, I could get a copy of the memo from Providence Engineering today, and they are changing the proposed use of the project from office to be an assemblage, which is also a permitted use in the C2 zoning district, but that particular use is also a special permit use. So it, we need to add that it needs to go to the ZBA for the special permit.
Okay.
So I, I just received it today, didn't have a chance to update the summary sheet.
Okay.
Ashley. Yeah.
We got a lot of moving parts here.
I see that, Chair, and, and I got to tell you, on, before we move forward, I would love if we can because I, I do have that question, because I'm looking at 34231A1E. And it appears that assembly is a following use, a principal use permitted in C2, so I'm a little confused about the referral to ZBA.
Because it says it's compliant with Article X, and we've run into this issue before, where when it says some things are permitted principally used, but then says it needs to be specifically approved under Article X. And Article X is the special permit procedures. We ran into this same issue with pools, and then when it went to the ZBA for pools, the ZBA then determined that it they didn't need to vote on pools, but in this case, I'm not, or they would make that same determination.
Yeah, if, if you look at the, at that section, it specifically directs you to the zoning board of appeals rather than the planning board. So that's why, that's why Ashley is making that observation. Now, if you go to the ZBA and the ZBA says you don't need our approval, that's fine, but the code so far says that you do.
Okay, so we will, we, we will, I thought, generally, I know with all food establishments and then the C2, in particular C2, automatically go, but we will certainly look at that and, and take that, obviously under advisement, that we'll have to go to ZBA. My other question was, you, you're also saying with HGZM?
That's, that's my question.
Right, because it's, it's defined as an action. In the.
But we're saying that they would, they would have to establish, I mean, what, what do we know?
So it would just be coastal zone consistent.
Consistent with all forty-four policies of the LWRP, which I'm, I'm certain that's a one and, I mean, I, I don't say anything's a one and done with, you know, but I, I'm, I'm just, again, this is sort of new, I mean, to me, that now for just in mere office or assembly, we have to go, because we're not even talking about anything aesthetic or structural. But, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would jump in here with a little experience on HGZM. I, I, I don't think we ever looked at anything like this.
In the commercial area? Okay, I can do a little bit more digging, I was taking a strict reading of the code, but that's not been the practice.
Because in every restaurant, every restaurant going to C2 would have to go in front of HGZM, and, and all due respect, and I would agree with Cindy, I mean, Ms. Goldstein, that you would have fifteen applications for the restaurants.
Well, I, I think it's worth looking into, just to be sure, I, I think all we're doing tonight is, is really hearing about the project for the first time. And typing it for SECRE and sending it on its way, where that may be.
Okay, um, okay, so, so instead of changing the use from the gym to the office, now you're changing it from the gym to assemblage?
Assembly, yes, Chair, because there is an ancillary office and I would love, and that's what I was going to direct before, actually my questions were about HGZM and, and the ZBA. Brian could actually jump in very quickly, Chair, and kind of get what, what the memo, which was, I wish you had that, but that memo does explain why, there was a little bit of confusion in terms of I gotta be honest, when they first came to me, I thought it was an office, but, yeah.
We're fine. We're fine, we can type it, you can move on to ZBA, by the time you come back to us, you'll have everything. I, I just never heard of anybody using the use assemblage before.
It's in the package of like light manufacturing, assemblage, producing, preparing of goods.
I mean, because you, I mean, you're not matching, manufacturing these cars, I mean, these cars exist, you're, right, you're.
I can walk you guys through exactly what our process looks like, if, if that would be helpful.
Um, I think that Andy explained it quite, in fact, somebody, I was explaining this to my husband today. We were walking the dogs and I said, oh, you know, we have this application, the gym is turning into a sports card where, and I described it exactly the way Andy did, and I didn't even know what I was talking about.
You know what, I just figured it out myself, at the Scott explain to me yesterday, so you and I are on the same page, Chair. Do you have that in front of you, I know they have a bunch.
I can, I can walk you through, and, and as Andrew said, I mean, we, so in the past several months, we've seen a massive influx in cards sent into us. We're getting about a hundred thousand a week now, we're, we're reaching the point where it's very critical that we find a, a larger location soon. We, we're currently in Mamaroneck, we're on 100 Mamaroneck Ave. And are just kind of really, really growing out of it and have been looking for a new location for the past several months. And feel like it's very critical to our business that we can find a place to move and, and process these cards. As, you know, we're, we're building up quite a backlog and we're not able to efficiently process them in the, in the place that we're at. Essentially what we're doing is we're getting, you know, a, a, a package of cards, we get dozens, if not hundreds, of packages a day. You know, this is a, a stack of about fifty sports cards right here in front of me. And what we're doing is we are processing and assembling someone's collection, and so we're putting together boxes, cardboard boxes in which we're storing them, they, you know, fold together. We're placing these cards in plastic sleeves and these plastic top loaders. And then we are storing them and, and labeling them and barcoding them. And they will go through our process and then get shipped up to New Hampshire, as, as Andrew pointed out, and so it is. And so it is definitely a pretty light assembly process. We're not doing any intense manufacturing or anything along those lines. We're basically putting together people's sports card collections and digitizing it for them. So they can sell them online, you know, to basically anyone in the world.
But but I want to point out, and I think this is an important point, to satisfy three forty two thirty one. Chair and members of planning board, we the transaction has to take place on site. So hence, when I talk about the transaction, the base, the headquarters is one twenty four Palmer. And if I want to buy a card, it goes, I'm purchasing it from that location, but it's remotely. They don't. So in terms of, you can't just walk into this location and and purchase cards. You actually have to, they do that, A, for security purposes, because they have, obviously, there's a tremendous amount of value in a lot of these cards, including the ones that you probably have, the Yankees one, the Yankee ones that you're holding on to, Chair. And, you know, so there's a there's a value, but also especially in light of what's happened of last year. So they, less contact, less people, the better. And that's the business model that they want to stick to.
Okay, okay. Okay, so it sounds like we're kind of in the beginning of the process. Things are moved around a little bit. Go go to zoning board and see what they say. If they want to do a special permit or if they send you back to us, then we'll welcome you back. Ashley will and Teresa, the attorney, will do a little bit more digging about HGZM. But it sounds like you may or may not, and it sounds like probably not have to go there. But we'll make sure we're following the code properly. And just let me ask you a question, because my my question here is that, you know, office use in the zoning code required for the square footage required a certain number of parking spaces. Does this changing the use to assemblage, does that change the parking requirements at all?
Sure, it does. And I'll let Mr. Dempsey jump in on there. He's the parking specialist on the team. So go ahead, Brian.
And can I share my screen?
Sure.
Ever, or whoever controls it.
The Amber does that.
Because if you have to go to.
You should be enabled to do so. You would just need to click the green.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. So when we we first got started on it, it was mentioned to us, it was office space. And so that's why the initial memo we put together quickly was office. On the site plan here, and I don't know if any of you have been into New York Sports Club before. But the building's gonna be left basically the same. And there's going to be, so the locker rooms and showers and all that will remain here. They're not going to be changed. The other parts of this office, there's going to be a small gym for the employees. With some of the leftover exercise equipment, the lounge over. So with tables, eat lunch and such. And so basically, this area will be an open workspace for the assembly part. And along with this will be the operations and sorting. So there's really only one small office. That's why it's really not office space here. There's also gonna be, there's a reception and such. But in terms of, there will be no customers here from outside. Everything is done online. And there's no, gonna be no large trucks or anything bringing in cars. Anything would be in regular delivery, the regular delivery vans. So it ends up being the parking by code for this. It's it's one space per every two employees. So that would be thirteen spaces, and that's what's being provided there. In reality, because mostly employees come by train, there would only be really three spaces that are needed for this site. But there are the thirteen spaces. The site's very convenient. It's a quarter mile from the train station. It's a block from the post office, which they will use often. And it's also, you know, next to Mamaroneck Avenue for all sorts of the food establishments. But so based on our calculations, we would meet in terms of the number of parking spaces required.
Okay, okay, that answered my question because I've, you know, the planning board can't can't do any variances or anything from the code. That would be the purview of the zoning board. So if you had some issues with the with the parking requirements. You know, that would be zoning board territory. But let me, Frank, since when this application first came to you? And it was said office and then you did your sort of review of zoning compliance and whatnot. Do you have to do anything now that it's been revised to a different use? Do you have to update any of your paperwork?
I could probably do a new determination letter. Sure.
Okay, all right. So he'll work on that. And you guys will go to ZBA to see if they want to do a special permit. Ashley's checking on things. And we'll do the secret determination now.
I have a question. Why, this is Eric Londa. I'm one of the owners. Why does it need to, I mean, I understand process here, you know, from our perspective, right? We got hit with, you know, a longstanding tenant going out of business by a state order due to a pandemic. And I understand that process here is important, but you know, timing is important for us as well. Obviously, you know, we have, you know, a building that is fully tenanted. Besides the New York Sports Club, that was mandatory, you know, that was mandated to close. Why do we have to go to ZBA at this point? It's a permitted use. It's C two. Like, is there a way to, you know, I don't want to say use the word fast track, but, you know, we're in a little bit of a critical timeline here. And, you know, it is a permitted use as described in, you know, in the code. So can someone help me understand how we can maybe expedite the process?
But it's not going to the ZBA for a variance. It's going to the ZBA for a special permit.
But if it's a, if it's a, if it's an approved use, why does it need a special permit?
It's a special.
That's all right, Ashley. I think I think we've explained that under one of the provisions in the zoning code. It indicates that there needs to be a special permit under that article for this type of use, which is a new use at this location. So no one's trying to extend the process or anything. We're just trying to make sure we're following the code. And we should be able to address that for you relatively expeditiously. The one question I had is in terms of the seeker typing. The only thing you're doing is reoccupying the building. You're not expanding the building. You're not changing the parking lot. You're not doing anything physically to the building. Is that correct? Okay.
This space, because we can literally show up on day one and it's exactly what we're looking for. Open layout. We can come in. And there's plenty of room for us to do what we need to do.
If I can interject, you're probably gonna see probably more projects like this. And as many of you know, I'm in the real estate biz in the village. I have more tenants than ever coming in saying, no, we don't want walls. We want open space. We want openness. So even with workstations, we don't want to be near people. We want to make sure we have room to spread out. And in particular, the last year, obviously, but even going up to that, the concept was these open spaces. These, it was like the incubators where there aren't walls. It's group think, group desk and and more open. So there's more of a presence of this, and I'm sure you'll be seeing more of that coming down the pike. Chair and members of planning board. But I I agree, I will take the time, explain this to my clients about the fact that there is a process. And I was going through that section and literally every item makes reference to Article at Article ten.
Yeah, it's it's very weird.
There's every single item in the C two. That, so office may be permitted, office may be permitted in C one, which is also permitted in C two. But obviously, then you have an issue with it changes the dynamics of parking. So it's a push or pull, and my clients will have to decide if they want rather be more off. So I get it. We do fit. And I'm hoping maybe one of the answers I could get from the board tonight is if from hearing what the use would be, what the plans of their intended use would be, do we fit under assembly? Because if you, as Chair and members of planning board say, hmm, we're not sure, then that's something that I need to go back to my clients to, hey, we need to clean this up. But if you, we agree, we collectively agree that, yeah, this is assembly, then I will absolutely take this down to ZBA. We'll get on the next, hopefully, in the next agenda and go forward. But if we're, if we are reluctant to define this, and again, if you want a chance to speak to counsel, Ms. Bankner about this, I understand. But I just want to make sure we're down the right path.
I think what Andrew's trying to say is we're trying to avoid getting, again, this is, these are special circumstances and special times. What we're trying to avoid is that we get bounced around and we get end up back here in two months, in three months. And we still don't have, you know, a path for moving forward. That's problematic for us. Like, I can't, and and I understand, and 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 I don't, I'm not, I understand the process. But again, these are extraordinary times. We're bringing a good business to the village that is more, you know, endemic of today's times, right? People don't want to commute to the city. You know, these are, this is a tenant that probably, you know, would be, is bringing jobs here that would normally go to a Brooklyn or Queens. And so we also have.
It's extraordinary times for everybody.
So so I guess what, maybe it would be helpful.
I mean, you threw us the curveball. Let's stay with the sports analogy. You threw us a curveball tonight, a change of use at the meeting. You know, all the paperwork we had was for something different. I don't even know what the code definition of assemblage is. So it's hard for me to make a determination of whether you fit that definition. Because, I mean, you know, I know what the word assemblage means, but that doesn't.
Let me just interject here. You're gonna have Frank redo his determination. So Frank gets to decide what assemblage is. So it's not really a planning board issue. And I I haven't heard anybody express a concern about the proposed use here. We're just trying to help you. The approvals that you need.
No, we're just trying to figure out a timeline, I guess, is ultimately my question. Is the, what is our timeline here when we get back to you? Like, what are the scenarios? When should we be looking at? Is it, you know, that's really what I'm trying to find out.
Right, well.
If you kept going down the office path, you are so over on your parking requirements, you're gonna have to go to the ZBA for that path as well.
Actually, that's exactly why, and and to be candid, again, once the concept was explained to me and I spoke to Ryan Dempsey, the concept of what is it that you're doing? You have a big space. Why do you need so much space? For so few either employees or office. And when they were explaining what the actual process is, I'm like, well, that's that's assembly. Well, you know, and if it's assembly, then wait, look here. Here's the assembly on eight, three forty two, three one one AE. And then one thing led to another. So, and I'm not trying to backdoor this. I'm merely trying to say, okay, you know, th- this is something that obviously if it's assembly.
We can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, no, no. Someone's trying to.
He's trying to talk. Okay, we're we're going around in circles here. We still have other items on the agenda tonight. So is that what you were gonna say, Cindy? No, we can't hear you. You're gonna have to log off and log back on.
Yell very loud.
But we're, right.
We're typing the chat.
So I think we have a course of action. As far as the timeline, you can work with the staff about getting, you know, Frank has to do his his redetermination first. Once he does that, you know, Amber and Ashley can work with you to get on to the ZBA agenda. And but.
Frank, would you like, um, would you like, let's see, Brian and Miguel to resubmit tomorrow? So we could, so we can generate that? Or do you want to, is that how you want to work that, Frank? Just so we know.
Sure, sure. That would be fine. But as is usual the case, there's no definition for assemblage in our code.
Yeah, there's not. I just checked.
I know. I save here, actually.
So what would it, would a path of least of lesser resistance be office to go get a parking, to go get a variance?
I mean. I actually don't think so. I I think getting a special permit is a lighter lift than getting a variance. Permit is something that's allowed by the code. Variance is seeking an exception from the code.
Right, got it.
Okay, Ashley, should we still type this for secret tonight or should we?
I I think the, you know, the facts of the of the case as it read, as it relates to seeker are the same. They're not doing any new construction. It's reoccupying an existing building. It's a use, whether they go for office or they go for the manufacturing, it's a use that is allowed by the code. So that is clearly within the list of type two actions under seeker.
Okay, okay. So then I need a motion. Oh, Cindy, is your sound back?
I don't know. Tell me.
Are you good?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
John.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I vote yes, for type two for Secra. Okay.
Kathy, Kathy, can I, can I just say that it's a, it's a great use for a building and a great business and a bunch of local guys? We should do whatever we can to fast track this thing.
I agree with you. I I mean, we're not, I don't think we ever do anything that throws a monkey wrench into the works on purpose.
If we can.
Help everybody here. If it makes sense.
If we can start preparing a resolution, we could do that.
If I might make a just a general recommendation is that that, this issue of of all of the permitted principal uses referring to Article X is throughout the code.
Yes.
I think it would be helpful if the planning board made a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees to amend that section of the code. So that it's more clear, what is the permitted principal use and what is the special permit use?
Can you?
That might not help every, this particular applicant, but going forward, it could help a lot of.
Can you send me that in an email?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you need any business individuals or individuals involved in the committee, we'd be more than happy to sign on and and support that. Absolutely. Totally, completely agree with you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Now, now wait, before you.
One twenty four Palmer.
Before we, before we hang up, I want everyone to go back in their closets, look deep far in the closets and go find your baseball cards from a couple of years ago, okay? That's everyone's homework assignment. We've got our work. You guys have to do your part.
My mother threw them out when I went to college.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone. All right, the next item on the agenda was a late addition to the agenda. We received, last month, we received a request from five twenty six, five thirty Fayette Avenue for an extension for the site plan approval. It was granted a year ago in March of twenty twenty and it's expiring. But due to the pandemic, they've had serious issues moving forward. So they asked that we give them an extension for the site plan approval. So any anybody, we got the memo, the letter from them requesting this later on, late today. So I don't know if anybody, everybody had a chance to see it. Hopefully, you did. If anybody has any questions, that's all we have at this point in time. Anybody have any concerns? If not, we can make a motion to extend the approval. So moved.
Yeah, second, I remember the application and.
Yeah, I remember it. It was a, it was a very non-controversial application that, you know, we basically, we had a couple of issues, I think, on historical property or something.
How much time? How much extra time did you need?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How much, how much extra time?
Yeah, for a one-year extension.
One year.
And it, the big issue is that because of the executive orders barring evictions, they were not able to evict the residential tenant that's in the building and they. That's.
That's the issue. Okay, I think that's expiring in April. The eviction notice, April or May. I just saw that somewhere recently. Okay, all right. So we have a motion on the table to grant the extension. Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes.
Thank you all so much for putting us on the agenda tonight. Really appreciate it.
Okay.
Oh, somebody's here from them. All right. Oh, somebody's here from them. All right. Thank you. Okay, now we need a motion to go into executive session to seek the advice of legal counsel with regards to ongoing litigation. Before we do that, I just want to go over the logistics with the team. We have people who are recused from different applications because of other issues. We're gonna do Hampshire first, again, like we did last time. So John, you'll have to, we'll have to let you know. I can text you or something when we're ready to go into the the second executive session for Grove Street, ABC Properties versus the planning board. And Ellen, you will go into the first executive session with us right away. And we have to we have to let other people know, at the call, Bob Spalzino and Teresa's going to let John Henry know that we're ready to go into executive session. So today we got emails from from Amber. There's two separate numbers to call. We're getting messages from Mr. Geary to reconsider his application. I'm sorry, we're not doing that tonight. We're moving forward with the rest of the agenda. We still have several things to do tonight. So so we need a motion then to go into executive session.
So so Kathy, do we need, can we do one motion for both executive sessions? Because I think we have to name the litigation. So the motion would be to enter into executive session regarding Hampshire litigation and Grove Street, also known as ABC LLC litigation.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I make that motion.
Is that, is that a proper, is that a proper motion for us to do it that way?
It's listed here. It's two separate Zooms, though.
Right, yeah, but that's, that's just the logistics of how we're doing this.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to leave.
Kathy, that's perfectly fine to just do one motion, because you're, you're not going into two executive sessions. You're going into one executive session in which different people are participating. So don't worry about it.
Okay, okay. So so we need a motion then to go into the executive session for advice of counsel for the two for the two lawsuits pending against the planning board, Hampshire and ABC Properties, which is Grove Street.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we have to leave this meeting and we'll go into the Hampshire Zoom call at this point.
And I'm recused on that for reasons already put on the record.
You want me to text you when we're ready to go into the other?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that. But in the meantime, now I have to call Bob Spalzino and get him in. Okay, great. Okay.
Okay.
You and the other Zoom.
I'll be signing off for the night unless you need me for anything else after you come back.
I don't think so. All we're gonna do is close the meeting when we come back.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Teresa, you're signing off as well. And Frank, thank you very much. And Esteban, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna keep Amber with us. Okay.
So I I'm gonna pause the recording here and everyone should sign on to the other link.